It is 5:30 on March 13th, 2025. I'm going to call this meeting of the Morton County Commission to order. Our first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Commissioners, Commissioner Tocash?
Here.
Commissioner Morrell?
Here.
Commissioner Buckley?
Here.
Commissioner Zach Myers unavailable this evening, myself, Commissioner Bean present. We have Auditor Roan up here at the front and State's Attorney Copee in the back of the room. Next will be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Get this rate. Minutes. Approve the minutes from the February 25th, 2025 Morton County Commission Regular Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes for the February 25th, 2025 Morton County Commission Meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the Morton County Commission Regular Meeting on February 25th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly bills and payroll. Commissioner Buckley?
There was one bill that didn't have a voucher or no numbers on it as to where it was supposed to be coming from, so I pulled that and returned that back to the State's Attorney's Office. Otherwise, I found everything to be in order. I move to approve the bills and payroll.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing that, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. All right, we will move right into our agenda. Number one tonight will be Don LaFleur, Tax Director with some abatements.
Okay, think this thing is on. Okay, so the first ones we have up, this one's a bit complicated, so I'll do my best to explain it without getting all mathy on you. It's abatement 6715 through 6720. When we submitted our request to the state for reimbursement for the homestead and veterans credits, they noted that we had six of them where if we applied the homestead first and then the veterans second, it would result in a lower tax bill for the taxpayer. So these abatements are to go back and do that. So we're not changing valuation, we're not changing percentages, we're not changing anything on it. We're just flipping around. Instead of veterans first, we're applying homestead first. Our Taxwise software we use has been coded to do veterans first always. That used to be the best way to do it, but when the state changed the laws in 2023 for the homestead credit, in some cases, applying the homestead first and then the veterans is better. So these, we have to kind of fight with Taxwise, but we got it to do it. And now we've got the abatement before you to apply it that way and then to refund the money to the taxpayer.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners too, when this came about, Mr. LaFleur called me up and we explained this whole, how Taxwise works, how it all values and formulas and so on and so on. So this is definitely in tune with what the state is going to ask for as well.
It'll probably be going forward. We'll stay this way then. Work better this way.
Taxwise is still working on actually coding their system to figure out which way is best, but there is an override we can do. I can monitor in the meantime and jump in where necessary and just override Taxwise and say, do it this other way instead.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve abatements 6715 through 6720 for the correct to, to correct the order of applying homestead credit and veterans credit, credit. Excuse me.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the abatement 6715 through 6720 to change the order of applying the homestead credit and veterans credit to the benefit of the property owner. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. And then lastly, tonight, we have a whole bunch of homestead credits, abatements to approve. So these are abatements 6721 through 6744. I've broken them down by location and year for you into the various groupings. Hopefully, these will slow down, but we're still getting quite a few.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve abatement numbers 6721 through 6724 for Morton County for the year 2023, 6725 through 6729 for Morton County for the year of 2024, 6730 and 6731 for the City of Glen Olin for the year of 20, I'm sorry, 6730 for the City of Glen Olin for the year of 2023, 6734 for the City of Glen Olin for the year of 2024, 6732 and 6733 for the City of Hebron for 2024, 6734 through 6736 for the City of Mandan for the year of 2023, 6737 through 6742 for the City of Mandan for the year of 2024, 6743 for mobile home abatements of the year of 2024, and 6744 for mobile home abatements for the year of 2025, also knowing that mobile homes are paid before properties are paid.
There was something there.
So it should be 6731 for the year of 2024 for the City of Glen Olin.
Yep. Thank you, Paul.
My correction.
Okay, now do we have a second?
A second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve abatements 6721 through 6744 as presented by Commissioner Morrell. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for listing those out that way. That works good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, next we have ASA Josh Breeze.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners and Auditor Roan. Thank you for hearing me out here tonight. I'll try and be brief here. Lately, the State's Attorney's Office has been, has opened up a pool for some of the vacant attorney positions in our office. Recently, over the past month and a half or so, I think the total number of applicants we've had has been three. The pool's been quite stagnant in terms of prospects or interested applicants. And so, I'm speaking with ASA Lingel and Rhonda Bowers, the office has agreed and believe it's a good idea that I go out next month on April 14th to the law school out there and give a presentation with respect to employment opportunities with Morton County. I think this would be a necessary venture to take to remain not only competitive with some of the other State's Attorney's Offices across the state that have gone out to the law school. Grand Forks County typically sends State's Attorney, Assistant State's Attorneys out there, but I know Burley County's been out there a couple times over the past two months, I believe. And other State's Attorney's Offices do have an established relationship with the law school, which I think by going out and establishing that would be beneficial, not just for the State's Attorney's Office itself, but for the county. So we get our name out there to show that there are employment opportunities following law school that provide both a fulfilling and promising career going forward. I can say that myself, that was, that was the position I was in when I got hired as a former law student looking for employment. Morton County, I think, has certainly fulfilled my expectations when it comes to work, looking for work out of school. And so I think the purpose behind this trip will serve a greater purpose going forward and provide some serious and great solid returns. So as part of my expedition out there, let's call it, I'll be giving a presentation over the lunch hour explaining what we do at the State's Attorney's Office, what potential applicants can expect, and try and set up some interviews with interested applicants if there were applicants that were willing to look for an interview. As part of that presentation, I can tell you as a former law student, one of the, one of the biggest incentives you can offer is lunch. You know, being a student, you know, your time is valuable as you see it. And so if you don't provide food or some sort of incentive there, students are more likely than not going to pass over your opportunity. So the reason I'm here tonight is just to request approval of a budget of $200 to provide some food for attendees at my presentation. I provided in my proposal for the budget or the agenda here this evening, the UND catering option, they do provide multiple providers for food. They have their own catering staff that can provide food options. There's another, there's a few other vendors on campus that can provide options. And again, from my experience, I know Chick-fil-A was always something that students would love to get for lunch. I'm sure many people here would love to have some Chick-fil-A right now. So I think Chick-fil-A, a budget for the Chick-fil-A food option that I provided in my proposal, I think that would be a good incentive to get students to this presentation. As you can see, the large food option there would serve about 25 guests. That would be the high end of what I would expect for students to attend my presentation, but that's, that would be the typical number I would recall seeing at these types of lunchtime presentations. For a delivery option, it'd be $139. For a pickup option, it'd be $107. Provides 200 chicken nuggets, 25 sauces, and like I said, it serves 25 guests. I certainly got no problem going to pick up the food myself. I'll make sure not to eat any on the way over, so there's some food remaining for everyone else. But I believe providing this would be a good incentive to get students there so we can promote the office a little bit more in terms of employment opportunities. Like I said, remain competitive. I know, and I don't want to really harp on this too much, but you know, with Burley County being out at the law school over the past couple of months, I don't want to say we're getting lost in the wave here, but I don't think, I think going out there to promote the State's Attorney's Office in Morton County here, I think it's important to making sure that we have a relationship going forward with the law school to retain and attract future prospects and remain competitive with Burley County. I'll, I'll make sure while I'm out there to, to harp on the benefits, the advantages and everything that I've experienced while at the State's Attorney's Office. And so with all of that, that's my proposal here tonight. Thank you for your time.
So you're going out on Sunday, Josh?
I will, yes. I did provide that itinerary in my proposal. So I'll go out Sunday myself, stay the night in Grand Forks. I'll be up early that Monday morning going to the law school. I do have time in the morning and in the afternoon following the lunch hour, where I'll be at a table, meeting students as they come through the commons area and providing some further information about, about the office or just even interacting with students, getting the name out there that Morton County State's Attorney's Office is hiring. And in that afternoon session, I would anticipate probably signing a few students at least to schedule interviews in the near future. I would look probably about three weeks out maybe, maybe depending on schedules, maybe a little further out because of the graduation that'd be coming up. But that's my expectation as to how I, I am going to plan the day and then I'll be coming back that evening.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just looking here, the cost of the hotel is not figured in here. Where is that coming out of? Your travel budget from the?
Yes, that would be from our travel budget.
Okay.
Yes. And my apologies for not including that if it needed to be.
No. And I just had a little discussion with Auditor Roan beforehand, the $200, where were you planning on taking that from? Or are you just getting that from us?
We were looking to seek approval from it, from the, the county commission.
Because we think there's enough money in the miscellaneous line that it could come out of there real easily. We wouldn't have to do any budget amendments that way.
Okay, that would be great if that could work. I'd really appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So will you be also maybe possibly recruiting for support staff as well? Because I know you're short there as well. Are you be prepared to do that?
Yes.
I think Rhonda would really appreciate that.
Rhonda wants me to do a lot of things, but I, I can tell you, with me going to the law school, support staff, support staff would be somewhere I would target, or I would, you know, expand on opportunities if it's, students were interested in it. I wouldn't necessarily just limit it to attorneys themselves. One thing I can tell everyone here tonight is that I've spoken with the Career Development Director already, and what she's advised me of is exploring potential extern internship options going forward. And we've had interns and extern, interns, I should say, recently in our office that have certainly provided a benefit and I think further that goal of promoting employment opportunities with our office. The rural recruitment externship program was something that was mentioned, but in my conversations, being that Mandan is more populous than some of the other counties that would qualify under that program, that might not be an option that we would qualify for, but I will continue to explore other areas that the county could qualify for as further incentive to attract students as well. But support staff would certainly be something I would entertain and advise students about if they were interested.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question along with this. Are there any opportunities for internships?
Yes, yes. Internships, I know I focused a little bit on the externship part there, but internships is something that I would speak with the Career Development and extern internship director with the law school about. Our office is looking to take on interns, if there are interns available, externs as well. With externs, that's more of a paid position though, and so I don't think our office is necessarily looking at bringing on an extern right away, obviously with some budgetary concerns, but interns are certainly something that we would consider and look into and be willing to offer.
Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions. First off, I applaud the effort. I think it's a great opportunity to get in front of the opportunity like this.
Thank you.
But you also mentioned Burley County. What other jurisdictions are doing recruitment efforts, do you know?
Cass County has done some. Yep, it's, you know, and you know, a lot of it is the regional proximity. So Wells County, I know has been out there as well. Cass County, Grand Forks, like I mentioned, Burley County. I believe Ward County may have been out there. I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but I can tell you, Commissioner Morrell, that there are State's Attorney's Offices that are continuing to promote employment opportunities other than ours. And I think that's, that's a hole that we can fill and, like I said, establish a relationship there and continue pursuing that going forward. Because in my experience, I was a student that didn't know what he wanted to do out of law school, and I saw the job posting for the Morton County State's Attorney's Office. It's been one of the best decisions I've ever made in my life. And I want to get that outreach out there to explain to students that there is a promising and fulfilling career out here in Morton County, and that if you consider and are interested in prosecution work out here, you're going to be rewarded. So I hope that answers your question there.
Sure. But follow on with that is, with those other jurisdictions, if you get any statistical data from them, what are their results? Not so much for the attendance, but what are they getting for successes? How many new hires and what are they're sitting out for retention, do you know?
I have not gone that far, and I don't have any statistics to provide tonight. I think right now, the big, the big push to make is to at least get out there and start that outreach.
I agree. And side note, what's the 1220 event? Do you know?
1220, that is-
Some of the areas that they're, that they plan to assist with marketing the event. Do you know what that one is?
The 1220, so the 1220 is their job portal. So that's the online job portal, and we actually have a posting up there. And I will be following up next week to refresh that and get that posting back up. Mary Feller, the Director of Career Development, has been more than helpful in getting our name out there to start already. So I'll be following up with her to, to continue to push that. I'm not sure if there's a separate 1220 event such as like a job fair or something like that, but that's something I will certainly explore. And if that's a position, or that's an opportunity to look at going forward, I think it's certainly something to seriously consider.
Sure. No further questions.
Anyone else have any questions, Commissioners? And I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, most to approve the Assistant State's Attorney Breeze to hold a presentation at UND Law, at UND for the UND Law students, the School of Law in Grand Forks, and to authorize $200 for provisions of lunch for the attendees of the conference.
From?
Dates that he should have presented here.
From the budget.
From, from their, from their budget, miscellaneous expense. Presentation be held on April 14, travel date of April 13 and April 14.
Correct. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the travel to UND for recruitment of UND Law students and the cost of the meal and travel out of the budget. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good luck. We'll get them. All right, next is John Psyke. For the third night in a row, I get to see you.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners and Auditor Roan. I have two items this evening. One is gravel hauling, contract gravel hauling. Last month, we accepted bids for contract gravel hauling. As we've said previous years, we budget $250,000 for gravel hauling. And prior to the times that we did this, we were fortunate to get maybe between 60 and 70 miles of roads gravelled each summer. Once we started this contract hauling, having those additional four trucks, we've been upping the average of about 130 miles a year that we've been able to gravel. So it has been beneficial in getting a lot more roads gravelled, and so we've chosen to continue it. In the background, we're trying to get more trucks, more trailers, and then this year we got an additional permanent employee. And hopefully, we plan on here in the next maybe two years, we don't have to go with the contract because we'll have enough of our own resources that we can match the productivity that we typically have with the, with the gravel hauling. But in this case, we're in 25, we advertised, as I said, our budget is $250,000. This year, we received two bids. Last year, we only received one. And the, the two bids were from Knife River Corporation, Circle C Enterprise, and Circle C Enterprises. And the low bidder was Knife River at a rate of $169 per truck per hour with a minimum of four trucks required, and then the $500 mobilization, because we don't always work in a place where they would bring all their trucks back if we're out in the western part of the county. And just as a comparison, last year, Knife River was our only bidder and our low bidder at $162 per hour per truck with the same rate for mobilization. So we were looking at just a 4.3% increase over last year, which has been significantly better than some of the increases we've seen over the previous years. So that is the, the bids, and we would recommend Knife River Corporation as our low bidder and that we enter into a contract with them. And I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Forgive my ignorance, but which, where Circle C out of?
Oh, it's a good question.
Okay, so then I don't feel so ignorant.
Yeah, and, and this is the first time we, I've ever attended something to get approval of a bid that I did not actually bring the bids with me because I didn't think I'd need them. So I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Caught you, John.
Yes, you did.
All right. That's okay. I was just curious because, you know, we had a bidder where they come from, little higher mobilization costs and stuff, so I was just curious.
And it's interesting because Circle C did not bid last year, but they bid the previous two years before that. So sometimes we get a, a bid from someone and, you know, they might be $1,200 a day for mobilization because they really don't know, you know, what it's going to take. And so, and I was very pleased with how competitive the bids were, so.
Commissioners, have any questions for John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. John, I know we've added a couple of trailers.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we added one tractor as well.
One last year and one this year.
Okay, one last year.
We have not received the one this year. That'll be either in April or May.
One last year and one this year, and I'm not versed enough on, on the details of your plan here, but that and another employee, are you anticipating using your entire gravel hauling budget?
The gravel, yes. We, we, yes, we plan on doing that. All $250,000 will usually start around the middle of May, and we haul until about the middle of September. That's when the amount is exhausted.
Ken, my, my question gets back to, you know, we were adding equipment, adding people. Are we offsetting any of these costs?
At this point, no. We are still wanting to get as many miles gravelled as we can. And this year, the issue we're going to run into this year is a lot of our roads that are on the plan to gravel this year are a lot farther away from the pit. So we're going to need the additional trucks, including our own, just to get that amount of gravel in an eight hour, in a 10-hour day, just because the cycles are going to be so long compared to what we've done the last two years.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Jackie checked. Circle C is out of bismarck?
They are bismarck. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the bid of Knife River Corporation of $469 per hour per truck for contract gravel hauling and $550 per working day for mobilization for the crew for a total of $5,958 per day, right?
Per day.
Per day, yeah.
Correct. And that's with our, we require four trucks.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bid of Knife River Corporation of $169 per hour per truck for contract gravel hauling and $550 per working day for mobilization of the crew for a total of $5,958 per day. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, John?
Okay, our next item is selection of a consultant for construction engineering for our project in Hebron on Summit Avenue or County Road 140 from 76th Avenue to 75th Avenue. It's a one-mile project. It's a reconstruction of the pavement and repair and replacement of some of the curb and gutter. We held our interviews back up a little bit. We issued a request for proposals back in February and advertised it as required by state law in the newspaper of record, plus we posted it on the North Dakota DOT website. And we, we held interviews on March 11th, this last Tuesday, and this was a very interesting interview and proposal because typically on a construction engineering, we typically get one bidder or one- get one bidder or one proposal. And that's usually if the company that designs it has a, does construction engineering, they will bid on it. And this time, we received five proposals from five different consultants. A couple of them, we had never heard from before. We've never received a proposal from Bros Engineering we had before. We'd never received one from S E H Engineering. And as far as Houston Engineering, we'd received them for design, but not for construction engineering before. So we went through the whole process, and each one provided a presentation. And after we all looked at all the presentations and discussed it, we came up and felt that it was very competitive. We were very pleased with the performance of primarily Bros Engineering and S E H, but when it came right down to it, AE2S was our selection. And those individuals on the interview panel were Commissioner Tokash, Roger Hilli from the Road Commission and myself. And so I would recommend that we, you approve the AE2S as our consultant for construction engineering for this project, and then we will proceed with the process that the DOT has established for getting them under contract. And this is a budgeted item. We had budgeted the match for both the construction and the construction engineering, and this construction engineering will be covered at 80% federal, 20% local match. So I'd be open to any questions that you may have.
So are we starting to see companies that put on people because of all the ARPA funds? And now the ARPA funds are going to finish up this year?
And.
And they're looking for work.
They're looking for work, and that's pretty much the universal response from most of them was, there's not a lot of work. And this is what we heard at the transportation conference last week from the DOT that their, their workload is way down this year compared to what it's been the last three or four. So there's a lot of consultants that are not getting construction engineering projects with the North Dakota DOT, so they're looking at more county work and more city work.
Good, makes it more competitive.
It does. Yeah, I was very pleased, and, and I was very pleased with the presentations that a number of them provided. It was, it was, it was very, it was a nice refreshing change from having one for a construction engineering project, so.
Commissioners, any questions for John on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the selection of a committee, of the interview committee for AE2S for construction engineering for the project. I'm getting the number 3C, 3,004, 54, P C N 23, 864, for the reconstruction of Summit Avenue and County Road 140 in Hebron, North Dakota.
Paul, it was SC instead of 3C, just for the motion, so that when I'm recording.
SC.
Yep.
Nope. Thank you.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve of the selection of the committee of AE2S for construction engineering for Project SC-3004, 054, P C N 23864, reconstruction of Summit Avenue, County Road 140 in Hebron. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, John. There you go. All right, moving on, Natalie, our Planning and Zoning Director.
Good evening, Chairman Baeman, Commissioners and Auditor Ron. Our first item tonight is the Backhouse subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 3 and the northeast quarter of Section 4, Township 139 North, Range 85 West. This is located about two miles north of New Salem on 36th Street. The applicants are Troy and Cree Nelson. So this is 36th Street here, the section line, there's a section line here and a section line here. So this piece that the applicants want to break off is in two sections. So it's being presented as two lots, but the purpose is just to remain agricultural. They're going to transfer it, the plan is to transfer it to the neighbors to the north who have been using it. So because this is quite a hill and not really traversable, there's a worn trail. Section line functionally jogs here, and so they are granting some right-of-way for that section line to jog, officially granting right-of-way in the course of doing this plat. So it's two lots being rezoned to estate, which is essentially ag without entitlement to construct a residence, and that's what it will stay, is ag. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
You ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I am, I am ready.
I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short form subdivision known as Backhouse Subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to estate. As a subdivision, it conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plat of a short form subdivision known as Backhouse Subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to estate. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is the Shook, I probably said that wrong. Is it Shook or Sha? Uh, subdivision in the east half of Section 35, Township 139 North, Range 82 West. This is located along County Road 82 near the Mandan landfill. The applicants are Ellen Junior Shook and the Leo Klein Family Partnership. The plan is, so this is the County 82 going down through here. This is the Mandan landfill. This is a piece of property that the applicants are going to be acquiring. And then, so these are those same parcels. This is the landfill. This is the larger agricultural parcel, and then they would like to break off a residential lot on the curve of County Road 82. So they, in doing this plat, because this lot and this lot are exempt, they would not need to be platted, but in order to dedicate right-of-way, you have to go through a subdivision process. So they were proposing to dedicate this right-of-way, grant a small corner of this lot to the city to make that corner of the landfill parcel match where the road is. And then they wanted to break off a residential lot, which is the main reason for going through the subdivision process. So in our long-range plan, we do not prioritize residential development here, clearly because it's next to the landfill, but we do have our rule that we just don't want to increase residential density in a quarter that's reserved for agricultural use beyond four entitled lots per quarter. So by that rule, this lot could go there. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, but they wanted to bring some agreements or language that would be recorded to basically put everyone on notice that this lot is directly down, downwind of prevailing winds from a industrial land use. And I was going to bring that language to you. I worked, I drafted one version, sent that to the parties, so the city, the applicant, and, yeah, the city and the applicant. And the applicants came to me, they said they thought the language was a bit constraining, and so they asked for a revised version, which I made. The city was hoping to go in a different direction in terms of being either more or less constrained. So I made two drafts of, one is a covenant that's more restrictive, one is more of a agreement. And I have those two drafts, but I just haven't routed it to the state's attorney, or I sent it to state's attorney, but that was only yesterday. So they, I wouldn't expect that they would have reviewed it in only one day. So I do have copies of those that I can read. Otherwise, if you wanted to have a more thorough review of those agreements, I guess I might suggest sending it back to Planning and Zoning for a more thorough review. But I do, I do have those copies if you want me to read them out loud.
Commissioners, what are your wishes? We're kind of, we haven't got, Planning and Zoning hasn't really finished it up yet, have they?
And I would agree with the concerns on Planning and Zoning with its proximity to the industrial use because, you know, it may not be today, it might be sometime next year, 10 years from now, somebody's going to have some concerns, and they're going to ask why.
Right, it'll be, it's guaranteed, it's, it is a land use conflict that is guaranteed. I mean, it's going to be a conflict at some point.
At some point.
Yeah.
So it'd be my recommendation that we give it back to Planning and Zoning, have them finalized.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to move the request from the Leo Klein family, L L P, for the final plat of short form subdivision known as Shook subdivision and zoning map amendment to residential back to Planning and Zoning for further review. Is there any discussion? Pardon?
Can I speak?
Uh, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, I'm the guy who's been renting that land for 10 years, so I know the garbage nest.
Okay.
And I'll tell you right now where that house is going to go, minimal garbage. The garbage nest is down in the draw. I have paperless.
Yep, if you're, if you're going to.
The city of Mandan refused to go in and pick up the garbage. I had to go and pick up the garbage.
You need to, you need to come to the mic. You need to come up to the mic.
Okay, I will.
If you're going to speak. And state your name.
Sure.
My name's Leonard Langeng. I actually live on the property to the west of where this is going to be. And as far as where the subdivision is for that house, come on out. Build your house out there. You help pick up the nails on that dumps road. That dumps road, I average one nail a week on my construction companies and my personal vehicles because they are not doing a good job of picking up. And another thing, that landfill is supposed to be an inert landfill, and it is not. My dogs bring home leaf lard. They bring home pork loins that are wrapped in plastic. They bring home lunch meat. They bring home cheese because they go over there at night. And as far as for the garbage, where that house is going, it's very minimal garbage. But down in the gully is terrible. I had, I, I talked, I, I had a bitch bit, not Mitch Bits, Brian Dirk, flat out say to my face, how do I know that garbage is coming from the landfill? Now you tell me when a city employee says that, what do you want to do to them? In the past, I've had to go out there with, um, the previous, not, not Mitch Bits before him was, oh, I can't remember, but they did a pretty good job of picking up. And I, the one springtime, I was, had my cattle in there because I rented, I've rented the pasture from Klein's for over 10 years. And since I've been there, that place has been cleaned up better than it ever has been because I put my foot down. But I've had pictures of two calves with plastic bags in their mouth at the exact same time that blew onto that property. And I told, that was Jeff Wright. And I told him, I said, you guys need to get out here and pick up this garbage in the spring? They basically, no, 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 no. And then finally, I said, well, then I have to pick it up. Picked it up, set them bill, and they said, well, we can't, we can't pay this bill. I said, well, what do you mean? I said, when city employees come out and pick up the garbage, do they get paid? Yeah. So I don't work for free either. Right now, I have outstanding bill for over $1,400 for the time that I had to go down in, in 2023, down into the gully in the garbage, stinky, slimy water, and pick up the garbage from there because I have emails back and forth from Mitch Bits, Brian Dirk, where I sent them, uh, emails or texts probably to Brian that there's garbage right west of my property, which is my tree rows that I need picked up because I had people coming out. And every time they'd say, I'd say, is it all cleaned up? Yep, it's all cleaned out. You know what? It's not cleaned out. I have, there was literally chunks of styrofoam, two foot by two foot, they're laying in my tree rows, big pieces of plastic that you can see from the county road. They'd say, yep, it's all cleaned out. And then with this draw stuff in 2023, yep, they'd say it's all cleaned out. I'd go down and take another bunch of pictures. Nope, it's showing that it's still not cleaned out. We're working on that clean until next time. Next time, again, they didn't go down in the gullies and clean it. So the city of Mandan does not take responsibility for their garbage. You drive out on Highway 10 and look at all the garbage that's in the ditches and in those fields out there. That is disgusting.
So, Mr. Langeng, I get there's a trash problem.
Yep.
And you live to the west. Are you supporting the subdivision?
No, they could have, just like I said, where they go out, where they want to put it, there's very little garbage blows right there.
Okay.
So the garbage isn't there.
That's not the problem, is the garbage, you're saying.
Right, where they're going to put that subdivision, no. The garbage blows down into the, the other set of land.
Okay, so what we're moving is to send it back to P and Z to discuss this a little further, just.
Somebody needs to hold his city man and accountable for the garbage. That's half the problem. Just, just guys drive out on Highway 10 and look at the gar, there's pieces of plastic this big and hot on the, that, why haven't they been out picking some of that garbage up this winter? We've had an open winter. What have all the city employees been doing all winter long?
That's, that's the city.
I know, but why?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Langeng, we definitely appreciate your input. This is definitely a conversation that you should have with the city commission.
That's a waste of my time.
I understand that, sir, but, but.
That center finger?
But what we have.
They wouldn't let me take it to the city commission.
Sir, we have to address county commission activity.
But they wouldn't let me take it to the city commission.
We appreciate that, thank you.
And like I said, let it come out there. I mean, I've got nothing against this subdivision, but they did put another fence up in, on the, the landfill, they put another fence up, which has helped tremendously with the garbage. Now they're down the hill, which is going to help again for the garbage.
But again, to get to the motion that we are containing with, sir.
I understand, and send it back, but like I said.
What we have, we appreciate your time, we thank you for your time, we need to get on with, with county business. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you the opposite side of this? Because I'm not, I don't want to open this up. Come up to the mic, Mr. Klein.
He's on, he's one for it. I realize you're going to send it, like you said, to a different place to talk about it. I just want to make a comment that, you know, a survey was done where the city of Mandan is, is the whole entrance, the landfill is on our property. And I, it's my understanding that there's some give and take that going to give that back in exchange to get this development done. And I, I guess I just think it's unfair. We, we had this property listed, our, our realtor contacted the city of Mandan many times, and I, I think if we're going to restrict the usage of this land, then, then maybe the city should own it. And that's my thoughts on it. But anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, have any other discussion on the motion to return it to Planning and Zoning? Oh, any other discussion? Last call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is a number of land use code amendments. I did send this to you, and a couple of you called me with comments, and I guess I would leave it, um, well, there was one, I guess I'll go through comments that were mentioned, and then we can certainly go through any extra comments that anyone has. I'll start out with the first page in just looking. I'll start out with the first page in, just looking at this today, just myself. I, I think we should change in, on, it says page 14, change that into two sentences, which really is not dramatically altering this.
Oh, your letter D on top there?
Yes. So currently, it's a, it sort of puts the maximum primary, maximum accessory, and ties both of those to meeting standards in section 5-010. And really, just the fact that you can put one house on there doesn't tie to 5-010 at all. So just to put a period in there and say, maximum of one primary residential structure is allowed per lot, period. A maximum of one accessory dwelling unit is allowed per lot, and according to the standards in section 5-010. It's the same intent, it's just being more clear. So if, if any of this gets approved as a package, I would suggest that that wording go with that motion. And I can read that again at any point. So that would just be my first comment.
That would be under the residential regulations, yeah, 2-050?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then the first comment I received were grammatical, and my apologies, because I, this is a very long document, and I tried to keep the changes in the document. So I'm pulling out as I'm printing, and I printed, the grammatical errors were from the one that's not the current one. So on-
I don't even remember where I found them.
Yeah, it's on page 55. Except I did send you yesterday, I think I did send you yesterday-
The cleaner version.
The updated version of that page.
Yeah, the, the extra the.
Yes. And so I will, I will basically just explain, so planning and zoning, the big paragraph that was in your original paragraph, or initial packet, they didn't like how specific that was, and I have to say, I agree. So the change was to make it, so to make it part of the review process to determine if there's floodplain risk. So the floodplain administrator during the application process for the accessory dwelling unit would say, does flood risk exist or not? And if it does, if it's significant flood risk, then it would be a basis to deny that application. Because we were trying to define, well, when is it enough risk? When is it not enough? You know, if it's just on a 10% year property, is that enough? And so to give the floodplain administrator, which happens to be me, also the zoning administrator at the moment, but maybe someday, there'll be two separate jobs, who knows? So just to put that in there. And any applicant who thinks that they were wrongly denied, they can appeal and have it reviewed. The administrative review process is really just for a matter of convenience, so they don't have to wait, and most of the time, it's, it would probably go through. So, just to make that shorter, and to put that in the review process. So this is what, so this paragraph is what PNZ recommended to go forward. And in your original packet, I had given you an old draft of just that part.
True.
So. And then, there was concern about the slaughterhouse portion, if that as just one chunk, 5-270, should come out of this set of amendments and be considered further in greater detail. We can certainly take that out just by itself. And then, there was a question on page 136 of, on points B1, 2, 3, 4, a should versus shall. For requirements for consultation for a long form subdivision. Because we had should and should in the rest of it, and these are the two points that were being added, I just preserved should and should. Sometimes you might have a long form subdivision that's really not complicated, and consultants will ask, should I have a consult with you? And I'll say, this is really straightforward, you don't need to. And so, but it's also not terrible if you say shall, and then the consultant, it's short, and we went through it.
So I kind of, I brought that one up thinking, just grammatically, if we have anything out there, just ask. You shall ask, and then we know.
Right.
Then there's no questions when you come back and go, oh, we missed that. So that was just a suggestion, you guys, and change it or not when we do this. It's up to you.
And that was it. That was it for anything that was up for mention.
How about page 36? That zone administrator, did we just correct that?
It was already corrected in my updated, yeah, the AN, the AN. I had corrected it, that was, yeah, that was the old. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, no, you're right, 36.
That was the substantial damage percentage and stuff that we discussed about.
Yep.
And then being it just the zoning administrator.
Right, yeah, because in all honesty, it shouldn't be zoning, it should be floodplain administrator.
It should be the floodplain, right.
And just because it's that case that way right now, doesn't mean it always will be. So the change would be to insert floodplain instead of zoning administrator into what would be adopted.
And then I had a concern about it just being one person setting that valuation and taking a look at it. But when you look in there, it's conforming to the best practices suggested by FEMA. So there is a kind of a buffer zone.
Right.
So that we don't have just one person setting examples of what our percentage and what our appraisals are at.
Right.
So. Floodplains that are zoning, right here, there's a couple of them in there. And there's a couple in E or AN, and it's A and F. EA and FA, it was in both of them. If I remember right.
Let's see.
So.
It wasn't in F.
No, it's not in F?
No, it's not in F.
Because that one, you need a licensed appraiser to do.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Correct, that was the licensed appraiser, zoning, floodplain administrators and the one above it.
Yep, and in the next section, under residential construction, and then again, says floodplain administrator like it should.
We get there. Yeah, it's in here twice on the top one. Okay. Any questions, commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to clarify one thing, and appreciate Ms. Pierce discussing the slaughterhouse question, and that, that came from me. I'm in, I am in support of slaughterhouses, we know we need those, especially the smaller ones. But right now, the proposal shows that that is permitted in an ag zone by right with review. And I've got some concerns with that. I think we, we probably owe it to our citizens to have a little more oversight over that. Right now, the definitions of a small slaughterhouse have a setback of 30 feet for, you know, for facilities, et cetera, et cetera. It's pretty minor, or not, I should say apparent minor, but it's a very small setback. And this could be cited next to residential, it could be cited next to anything. I think we, we need to send that back to planning and zoning to dig into that a little bit more. Again, I am in support of this, but I, I don't want to see this permitted by right with review with very little restrictions on it. I think, I think we owe it to, to dig into that a little bit more. I did look around quite a bit. I don't know if anyone else is defining these as large and small slaughterhouses. USDA obviously has regulations for, for inspections, and that depends on how the, how the slaughterhouse is operated. But I just, that, and then also when we had the public comment period for this, for planning and zoning, I went through the, the minutes and the agenda, and I was able to see where we had notified the public of some of these other changes, but we haven't notified them about that in particular. So I think we, we might have got ahead of ourselves a little bit.
So Commissioner Tocash, you want to just pull section 5-270 for now?
Correct. Everything to do with splitting of the slaughterhouses between large and small. I'd like to leave that as is, defined as a slaughterhouse, and send it back to planning and zoning.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to pull section 5-270 and send back to planning and zoning just for further review and clarification. Is there any discussion? Let's-
I have a question about what Commissioner Tocash is asking. So you want to leave C and D alone, correct?
C and D for the definitions, you're talking?
Yeah. I guess I want, I want to know what you want us to look at.
Right now, I would, before, we don't know what, okay, right now, it's zoned, the proposal is zoned for an agricultural zoning for-
And industrial.
Permitted by right with review. Okay. Now, I'd like to pull that out, and that includes, let's pull out C and D, and just leave it as slaughterhouse. And there, and again, right now, those are, those are, with D, and apologize for everyone that doesn't have a document in front of them, but we've got standards for minor slaughterhouse facilities. There's only two items that are designated in there. So basically, anyone could put a slaughterhouse in by right with only those two restrictions. And I think we need a little more oversight. So what I'm proposing is just leaving the slaughterhouse designation as it was. Forget about large and small. Send it back to planning and zoning, and wait, and they come back with a, with a definition, a clear definition, or change the, the use permitted by right with review. That's really what I'm hung up on there. Then they can bring that back as a, as a proposed amendment to our, to our code.
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Tocash, I understand and certainly appreciate the need for more clarification, but I guess I would, as staff, I would object to just having one definition for slaughterhouse. I really do think we need a major and a minor. And we can certainly have a different kind of review, you know, if you want more of a review for a minor, but that there should be a separate set of standards, because the impacts of a minor versus a major are probably going to be quite, quite significant.
Okay.
And that may become, if, if they're the same set of standards, I think that hurdle will be insurmountable for-
No, and, and you're exactly right. I, it does make sense to flip them out, and I believe that's the right way to go forward with this. But we don't have a defined definition for slaughterhouse. So if we put that in the document for a small slaughterhouse, we don't have anything to go along with it that I'm comfortable with.
So the way I see the motion is, we're just going to pull this section and let planning and zoning work back on it, and not approve it with the rest of what we're doing tonight.
Correct.
Correct.
And that, that's all I'm, I'm just holding 5-270. And the, and you guys will work on it in planning and zoning.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that, pulling that part out? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we'll hold that section from our approval. Any other questions, concerns, comments on the rest of the document?
And I just, because this gets recorded, I want to make sure everyone knows it didn't say 30 feet from a house. I just want to make sure, it was 400 feet, 400 feet from any occupied residence or residential district. So.
Setback 30 feet from the property boundary.
From the property boundary, if it has no residence on it, yes.
All the concerns I had were answered when we visited, so I'm good. But anybody else, commissioners?
Natalie and I spoke about the floodplain stuff a little bit in depth some time ago too, and appreciate that data being in here clearly.
Yep.
Clearly stated, should I?
It took us a long time to go through that floodplain stuff.
Yes.
We had lots of discussion.
It's painful enough when you're a floodplain administrator, but for people who aren't, you know, they haven't read the tomes, it's even more painful.
One administrative comment on page noted as 55. Section 5, well, basically down in subparagraph C2, where that the, the is to be stricken. Just another administrative note is, you got special flood hazard area, and you want to make that the abbreviated version, because you're referencing it above with the abbreviated version.
So this, and again, I'm sorry, that maybe-
Line 6.
We have the old version here.
I think you might have-
Yeah, I have the old version, yeah.
So let's maybe-
It's corrected to that already.
Comb through the-
Commissioner Murrell.
Is that the one?
Yeah.
Oh, was it there the? Is that on your version?
Yes.
Yeah, that was pointed out.
That's the old version.
Yes, that's the old version, sorry.
But it's after that.
No, this is actually the reformatted bullet that used to have there the in it. And so this got completely rewritten.
The new one is correct now, the way it's worded.
So the one on the screen here is what would be approved if you are approving this current version. Because number two is a lot shorter. It's shorter, it got changed.
Yep, it looks like it's pulled out altogether.
Yep, and, and just to make sure, I'll reiterate again, this is the version that came out of planning and zoning, and I apologize that you had a quite old version in your first pack.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Hard to hire good help. Really pick on her. Tell her it's hard to hire good help.
It's true.
Any other comments, or do we have a motion to approve what we have been presented?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ray.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the updated version of the land use code with the applicable amendments to include removing the section on slaughterhouses, which will be addressed at a later time.
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify that motion on the shells that were suggested.
Oh, we didn't, did you guys want to move those to shell or should?
I would rather have that be as a shall.
Okay.
That part is part of your motion.
Yes.
And I just want to clarify for all points 1 through 4.
Yes.
Yes, I made a note on, on my copy here.
To approve them with those corrections.
On page 136 for whoever's taking the minutes, so that you have that point of reference.
Page 136, subsection B2, 3, 4.
1, 2, 3, and 4. Also one, second line.
Oh, yep, there it is.
Do we have a second to the motion on the floor?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, it's been moved to approve the various land code use amendments. I said that backwards, anyway. Approve the land use code amendments with the corrections of should to shall on page 136, and pulling the section on slaughterhouse for later review. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And then I just have one more thing to mention. A heads up that the, so the Harmon Lake Dam breach inundation overlay district, Zone 1 of that overlay district has had a moratorium on it for, it's been renewed. It's going to expire at the end of April. So I am bringing that back. I'm bringing it to Water Board at their meeting at the end of the month. And then I will be bringing it to planning and zoning. So it's the same day, actually, Water Board, planning and zoning, same day. And then it will come to county commission. And I guess I'm just asking you- And I guess I'm just asking you, and I'll be asking the Water Board, to put their thinking caps on and really decide how we want to address this because this will be the third time that we've renewed and had a moratorium. So it is, it is a wicked problem. There is no good answer, no matter what way you spin it. So just a heads up that that will, that's coming, it will be coming to you soon.
All right. Anybody have anything else for Natalie?
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Nice job through P and Z Board on the amendments.
I'll, I'll let them know.
All right. Next on the agenda, we had our human resources director for the appointment of the park and weed manager, but she is unable to attend, so Commissioner Tocash gladly stepped up, I guess, and we will let him present this.
All right. Fellow commissioners, this next item is combining the departments of County Parks and the Weed Board, and this was discussed at a prior commission meeting, and we decided, the commission meeting was dated January twenty-eighth, we had decided to go ahead with interviewing for potential candidates for director position that would oversee parks, County Parks, and also Weed Board. And that's what we're here to discuss today is our candidate that has been selected and also to approve or disapprove the the joining of those two two departments. Just a little background, I won't get into the the meeting minutes from January twenty-eighth of this year, that's that's already part of the record, people can go out and find that if they want. But at any rate, we do have the Director of Parks, Tim Nelson, that is going to be retiring in July of this year, and so it gives us an opportunity to join those two departments. Previous information is a couple of bullet points. We've been projecting a savings of over seventy thousand dollars a year for the county and also enhanced efficiency. Am I speaking well enough, Jackie?
You are.
You're good.
You're good, Paul. One, real quick, it's, we're combining the director, not the two departments.
Correct.
So, yeah, just so everybody's clear on that.
Yep, thank you. But what we're looking for is enhanced efficiency, sharing of staff, equipment, facilities, administration, cross draining, et cetera. And position was open in January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. We did get five applicants, and three of those were placed into a consideration pool. The interview team determined that two were qualified and were vital to a formal review. And so we selected, out of those, we had an interview panel of Kevin Schmidt, Paul Tocash, Nathan Bame, Patrick Martin, Joel Rosberg, and Jamie Wetch with the two applicants. And out of those two, we scored them both, and Cody Schnabel was the person that was selected for the position. And my understanding is he has accepted that position based on board approval or commission approval. And so, do you like to say something, Jackie?
No, I'm just waiting.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
I'm getting a little unwinded here. You look like you're looking for, looking to jump in here.
You're fine.
No.
Okay. People that have known Cody know that he's done a fantastic job with the Weed Board, and I was very excited that he came out as the top candidate in the selection process. I was happy that we opened it up to outside candidates because that should give you a lot of confidence that you came out as the top, top candidate. So congratulations. And at this time, I'd like to ask Cody to come up, and have you got any, any comments to make?
I guess I didn't come with any comments. I think this is a good step going forward, and I think we can really make this work, save the county some money and taxpayers. You guys have any, any questions?
I think I asked all mine in the interview.
Well, Ms. Chair, again, being part of that, that conversation on the Park Board and the joint meeting we had with Weed Board, as well as how this can be just a one step in the future of Morton County as far as creating efficiencies and looking to the future versus just running a status quo. The challenge, of course, is in the position, from the point of accepting moving forward, is the actual pen to paper, you know, making, making the synergies work and and making the budgets work, making everything jive and and flow, so basically so we can cover what we're supposed to be doing.
Yep, exactly.
Now you've got two budgets to worry about, not just one.
And how many bosses?
Okay, Cody, thank you.
Thanks.
And therefore, you know, Human Services or Human Resources Department formally recommends the approval of Cody Schnabel's appointment to the Director of Park and Weed Management, recognizing his proven leadership, extensive experience in land management, and their strong community ties. Any of the fellow commissioners have any questions?
I would probably just suggest that Tim be informed that he's not done yet.
No, no checking out too early.
That's right. Congratulations, Cody.
Somebody, you want to make the motion, Paul?
Yeah, I will. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to formally appoint Cody Schnabel as Morton County Park and Weed Management Director with an annual salary of eighty-five thousand, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, following Kim Nelson's retirement. Additionally, I propose a monthly training stipend of four hundred dollars for March, April, May, and June to support his transition into this role.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to formally appoint Cody Schnabel as Morton County Park and Weed Management Director with the stated stipulations. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Cody.
Congratulations, Cody.
All right. Auditor Roan, you are next on our agenda with some budget amendments.
Okay, so we have a short list here of just seven funds that went over budget. The first one is the Joint Detention Center Capital Projects Fund, so Burley County has a fund, and so do we, where we put in a certain amount of money every year, and then money comes out of this fund if there is some kind of extenuating repair that needs to be done in the jail. And so we didn't have anything budgeted in this fund, and we had to chip in our share of a repair, and so that is that fund of nineteen thousand two hundred and ten. Back the Blue Grant, this grant was funded to us or distributed to us back in twenty twenty-three, and it just finally got paid out. The sheriff requested payout in twenty twenty-four, and so there was nothing budgeted for that, and that was fifty thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Mantiff, so the sheriff's department has an employee who's on the mantiff and uses his Morton County credit card to purchase items, and then Mantiff reimburses us back, so it's just an in and out that we get reimbursed for. And so that's sixty-two thousand four hundred and three. The Internal Service Fund, as you're aware, the sheriff had told us last year, or in twenty-three, that of all the vehicles he ordered in twenty-three because of the production issues, they did not come and get delivered until twenty twenty-four. So the money did not get expended in twenty-three that was budgeted for those vehicles, and again, got expended in twenty-four. So that amendment, that is not correct there. So our original budget was three hundred and twenty-seven, oh, yeah, it is, I'm sorry.
That's right.
I'm looking, I was looking at the last column as the amendment we needed. Okay, so, yeah, the amendment there is the hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four. The apartment building, when we had the torrential downpour in August and the basement over there flooded, we did not have that budgeted. So we needed amendment there of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six. The state ARPA funds carryover from prior year projects, hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven, and then the regular ARPA funds, there again, carryover of prior year projects, two hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and nine. So I just need a motion to approve these amendments.
Do you need a total or any dollars?
Nope, just say as presented, it's fine.
Cheap, cheap, cheap way out. Commissioners, any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we approve the budget amendments, the twenty twenty-four budget amendments as presented by Auditor Roan.
I think he's done. Are you done, Ray?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
We didn't know, you kind of paused there and inhaled like you were going to keep moving. All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-four budget amendments as presented by Auditor Roan. Is there any discussion?
Don, question on the apartment.
Yeah.
I arranged them. So wasn't that addressed through insurance as well? Or is it just?
No, insurance does not cover that.
Because it was a rain event. Yeah.
It wasn't a pipe that broke.
Right. It was a rain event. It's not a flood.
It's a natural.
You've got to have.
We don't have flood insurance.
Exactly.
So it wouldn't cover for flood.
Right. It's just an insurance thing. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? It should be a roll call vote. All those, Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, so yes, motion carries. All right, Commissioner Morrell, I think the last one is yours.
Yes. Again, I've spoken with each of the commissioners for the last several months about possibilities of a retreat. So what I'm asking for is, is to actually set a retreat, been working with Jody Brunns out of NDSU Extension, three possible dates that she has, the March twenty-one and April twenty-two and an April twenty-five date, depending on what we finalize for an agenda. So again, what I have in here is just some quick thinking of an agenda. And again, looking at a fifty thousand foot elevation, but it allows us to have that conversation. We can dwell down into the minutia, go back up as we see fit, as we need for the purposes of conversation. And having this facilitated by Jody Brunns within the S U Extension so we can actually engage in the dialogue equally with each other. The intention is to, before an agenda is finalized, I'd like to get more input from the other commissioners as far as suggestions for the agenda. In addition to that, is reaching out to the department heads for the same purpose as well. So again, we can finalize an agenda, have that presented back, so again, we can do public notice as need be. But the other thought is, you know, could we do this in a, in a regular commission meeting? We most certainly could, but not all in one shot, and because one topic can be, you know, how long of a conversation.
I think doing it at a commission meeting, you'd, you'd limit your discussion.
Your dialogue.
I mean, if you're going to do this, you're going to, we want to do it right and not do it halfway.
Right.
Question, and I kind of brought this up to you once, is why are we using NDSU when we do have a facilitator with H, our HR department?
The facilitator with HR department would be a paid process, the NDSU facilitator will be coming in as a pro bono. So we offer them whatever stipend for meal or anything of that nature. At least my experience using NDSU Extension for other events that I've brought in as a facilitator.
I've worked with Jody, she's wonderful.
Yeah.
They have no problem with her.
It's not paying a contractual obligation, it's paying out just a simple stipend for meal or something of that nature.
Well, and like, right now, I can tell you, March twenty-first is a no-go.
Mm-hmm.
I am totally unavailable, and March, or April twenty-second is commission meeting.
Sure. Yeah, I haven't looked at it. This is just the dates that she has.
Bad day for that.
And if we have to push it out into May?
Yeah. So I know those two dates are definitely out on my calendar right off the bat.
And April twenty-second and twenty-fifth are out for me because I'm having some surgery.
So we'll have to look at a few different dates for sure.
Then let me ask this, is, again, if we as commission want to move forward with this, and I'll just work with her and get a date finalized that works with all of us.
And commissioners, I want to get on record that I do support this. I think we need to, there is a strategic plan out there, it took me a while to find it, but there is one. But it does need some updating from time to time. It's a, it's a great blueprint. The other thing I'd like to do, and it's, I think it's very important, to work with the department heads and, and get their thoughts on what guidance they need from us, what are the things they're seeing in the future, things that are going to be impacting them. So I think we, I think we need to do that. Also, definitely, I'm, I'm in support of a facilitator to keep things moving and, and keep the infighting down.
The, the other consideration too, and I've done this in previous world, is depending on the topic, is inviting staff to come in and be a part of that conversation. We would be the main instigators in the dialogue, but, you know, obviously inviting them to be part of that, whatever that topic might be. And again, as the agenda gets flushed out, that would be weeded out as well.
Are you looking at like doing it all in one day or more days? I mean, my, I'll be going.
It depends on what the agenda comes out to be, because as we can imagine, you know, as it sits right now, portfolios, employment, facilities, strategic plan, depending on how extended conversation might be, that could be half a day, that could be a full day, which is as it sits.
Because I got a nine to five.
Right.
Eight to five, actually.
Yep.
And there's a lot of days I'm out of town. If I'm off for a couple of weeks here coming up, I'll be making up time.
Right.
So it's just a consideration of when we do this, make it work, and I don't want to be half focused and not here. You know what I mean?
I would think, I would plan for a full day, minus a lunch break, of course, but I would plan for a full day, because I think that would encourage the dialogue. We can get our mind in focus to what the discussion is and be able to finalize bullet points or action steps from that point forward.
Does anyone know, do we have any internal resources for a facilitator? I have no problem at all going to someone that does this, and, and sometimes it helps to get someone outside the organization, but it might be something I'll, I can ask Director Bent about.
Well, we do have NDSU Extension. Jody Brunns, NDSU Extension, has offered to facilitate.
Okay.
And I have talked to our HR, yes, we mentioned that earlier, she has a resource, but that would also be a paid resource to come in to do that, where this one here is not that same caliber of a price point.
My concern was just trying to line up dates.
Right, correct.
Yeah, and that is a concern. I mean, you've got five different things going on here.
Yeah, exactly.
Different directions for everybody.
Yep. Yep, trying, so again, getting, getting in front of it, trying to get the agenda identified, solidified, and working on dual-pronged approach, trying to get dates identified so it works with all of our schedules at one shot.
So what do you want tonight?
Either consensus to move forward, a formal consensus to move forward, and develop a final agenda that will come back to the commission for approval and moving forward. Approval, acceptance, whatever term you want to use. I don't think we need a motion for it, but just a consensus.
No.
A consensus to move forward and, and finalizing an actual agenda, finalizing a date and bringing that.
I think the date will be your biggest thing, the agenda we can work with. The dates are going to be the toughest one. dates are going to be the toughest one.
Right.
Getting everybody on the same days. It's got, basically, it needs to be just far enough out so that you set that day aside and you say...
This is it.
Yeah, everything else gets pushed one day or the other, one way or the other. So I guess I'm okay with trying to find a date and working with Jody Brunns. Like I said, she's excellent to work with. I've done several different courses with her. Let's see what her dates are, what works for her, and where we can come back with those. That's what I would think. See if we can come up with a day, because it's going to be her schedule too. If you get her out one day, you'd rather do that than have her come back two or three times too.
Right.
Just works better for her, especially if she's doing it pro bono.
Correct. So if that's consensus of all, then, because we've all discussed this, it just finally puts the wheels on the bus.
Yep, I support that.
Yeah.
Then we'll keep moving.
Find some dates, see what we can come up with. All right. Anybody have anything else good for the order?
Snowplows can stay off the trucks tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, we missed the moisture.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Unless anybody else has something.
I move and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? No, don't need a discussion, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.